Shoot. I think it's such a.
It's probably on YouTube.
I gotta log in to see if we're broadcasting.
It's been said that the test of a man's courage is how he performs in the face.
You have one minute?
I got six.
You got six? Go ahead. You ready?
All right. Let's call the village board meeting in order. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call and open meeting law compliance, Jeff.
President Jeff Maurice.
Here.
Trustee Jay Pecker.
Here.
Trustee Gary Vich.
Here.
Trustee Dylan Newman.
Here.
Trustee James Hurt.
Here.
Mr. President, note for record, you have a quorum of the village board. Also note for record that Tom Thomasack from the finance committee is here. And Mr. President and board members, you're in full compliance with the open meetings law.
Public comments. Any public comments? Seeing no one's really here. Sheriff Ness, do you have anything to report for us? Will you go right away or?
I've got nothing for you guys. Do you have anything to me?
Just thank you for your great service.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Moving on to the presentation and approval of the Village of Burn in 2024 audit report. This will be done by.
Recalling from Karen.
Karen Wolf is our village auditor. Karen, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Board members, can you hear her? I'm putting my microphone down. Go ahead, Karen.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me and thank you again for having us to the audit for you this year. So, everybody has a draft copy, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, we want to just start with the independent auditors report on page one. And again, this year you have an unqualified opinion, which means that in our view, that everything is presented fairly. So, that's what you want in your report. So, that was good. That was the same as last year's. We are getting this done quite a bit earlier this year, which is nice. So, if we want to go on to the financial statements, on page four, we have the statement of net position. This is just kind of like a balance sheet, if you will, that's more of an accrual basis, which means it's showing your outstanding loans, it's showing your capital assets, it's showing your WRS retirement information. And then along with that on page five is the statement of activities, which is more of your income statement. So, it's showing your revenues and your expenses. Now, on page four and five, this is a different way of reporting than you'll see later on page eight and nine. So, on this, there's just a couple of things I want to point out because I think I'd rather spend more time on the other way of reporting because I think it's kind of more geared toward your budget. So, I think it's going to kind of make more sense to spend more time on that. But just real quickly, compared to last year, you do have a net position that went up fifty-five thousand from the previous year. So, that was your change in net position this year. So, at the end of the year, you had just over five million dollars in your net position. And you'll see that on page five. That was up from about four point nine eight the prior year. Now, if we go on to page six, this is more of a general balance sheet. So, this is where you don't show how much you owe on the loans. You basically expense the loan payments as you get, as you pay down. So, on here, there's a couple of things that I just wanted to point out. It does show all the different funds. So, you'll see there is the ARBA fund. There were some funds that were utilized in 2024. There was a little change in that from prior year. The general fund was up one hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars. So, that was what the general fund had in revenue over expenses for 2024. If you can look on page eight, you'll be able to see this is where you show the revenues and expenses. So, if you go into the general fund, you'll see down at the bottom, you'll see excess of revenues, one hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred two, which brings your fund balance to a negative one fifty-nine at the end of the year. The ARBA fund had about thirty-six thousand dollars, and that's just the interest that's occurring on those funds. So, that's why you see that income there. Your debt service fund had a negative nine hundred and fifty-dollar expense over revenue. So, there was a deficit there. Project improvement fund, forty-nine thousand dollars, and that again is the interest that's occurring on those funds. And then other governmental funds, which include the stormwater and the parking pad funds, had about a sixty-seven thousand dollar surplus. So, in total, you are at a surplus of three hundred and six thousand eighty-two dollars, which brings your total fund balance up to one point one million at the end of the year. Is there any questions on that?
It doesn't appear to have any, Karen.
All right. And then if we can go to page ten, the statement of fiduciary net position, the custodial fund, this is just kind of a basic summary of the funds that you guys have received based on your 2025 statement of taxes. So, it's the monies that the village has received in 2024 for the school districts, for the county, and you're kind of being the custodian of those funds until those get released in 2025. So, that's just a basic net position that that money's coming in and will be going back out. On page twelve, you can see the notes for the financial statement. We'll kind of go through this. There's not a lot of changes from prior years. There's a couple of things I'll note, but the majority of this has stayed consistent with prior years. You guys didn't have any significant changes for the year. The first thing was there were two new standards that were, that started in 2024, accounting changes and error corrections and compensated absences. Those two standards were first started in 2024. They did not have any material impact on your financial statements, but we do need to report that those were issued and that you guys do, did implement those. Then we can continue on. Like I said, a lot of this is just general information about the village that has not changed from prior years. So, the first page I think that we can talk about a little bit is on page twenty, you'll see your cash and investments. There was a little bit of a decrease in your end of the year cash from prior year, but at the same time, your taxes receivable went up. So, those pretty much just balance themselves out. So, that just means that you guys probably got a little bit more money in December of 2023 for taxes than you did in December 2024. You'll see you have an amount of restricted cash. That's mainly the project improvement fund. And then you have those fiduciary funds, which is the custodial fund of those taxes that you guys are custodians for, for the school district and the county. So, that was at four point six. So, you had total deposits and investments at about seven point four at the end of the year. On page twenty-two, there's payables and amounts. No significant changes there from prior years. Everything is pretty consistent. On page twenty-three, capital assets. So, these are just the investments you guys are making in your infrastructure. And I did just want to point out that this year you do have construction in progress. And what that is, is the Center Drive Bridge project that was started. So, you'll see there's about ninety-nine thousand dollars of expenses that you guys incurred in 2024. Once that project is completely finished, that construction in progress will just get moved into your infrastructure. But until it's finished, we just keep it in a separate account. It makes it a lot easier. We don't depreciate it until it's complete. And with the big grants that you guys are getting for that project, it kind of keeps it isolated. So, that keeps things a lot cleaner. On page twenty-four and twenty-five, we talked about the debt. You did not have any new debt issuances in twenty-four. So, this is just kind of continuation of the prior year's debts. You can see like a brief scenario synopsis of what your principal and interest is going to be on page twenty-five, up at the top for the next number of years. And again, quite consistent. I think you do have one loan where it's going to be ending with the principal payments start on another loan. So, you're going to really see a pretty consistent amount of principal going out for quite a few years here. On pages twenty-six through thirty-five, that is all required reporting for your WRS, for the retirement system that the village is part of. The information is there, that's in here, is all based on an actuary report that we get. Nothing, I feel, that needs to be pointed out in that. No big changes. Big thing for you guys is just knowing every year the percentage that you're required to put in for the employees, and that's always been updated every year. So, there's nothing else in that section that I think is worth discussing. On page thirty-six, we do have on note fourteen commitments and contingencies. There is a note regarding that Center Bridge project. You guys have signed the contract for that. Almost like, almost two million, I believe, like one point eight million for that project. There's just a little paragraph that gives the gist of the estimated cost of that and then the funding that you guys are beginning from state and federal to help pay for that. On page thirty-six also, there's on note sixteen, just kind of gives a breakdown of that fund balance of one point one million. Compared to prior year, you will see prepaid expense had gone up quite a bit from last year, and that's just because the village did make their 2025 business insurance payment in 2024. So, we need to book that as a prepaid. So, that's the only difference there. That's kind of off from prior years. And we did talk about that a little bit, Karen and I did, and Tom, at the meeting earlier this week. And you're going to see that because a lot of places want their money before the first of the year. So, we just reallocated all of an expense into a prepaid account to just keep everything the same as last year. And then on page thirty-eight, you're going to see note nineteen. This note just shows kind of the excess of actual expenditures versus what was budgeted for the year. So, you'll see that public safety did have an excess of about fifty-five thousand of expenses over budget, and capital outlay was about a hundred and six thousand over budget. The majority of that hundred and six was that bridge project. So, once you take that into consideration, that was, that was very close to budgeted. So, that's just kind of an idea of where you're at budgeted versus actual with the different funds. Then on page thirty-nine, we get to kind of more of the nuts and bolts. This is the schedule that shows your actions, the general fund budget versus actual. So, just kind of compared, I compared this to prior year, and there was a couple of little things that were different that I wanted to just talk about a little bit. Under the intergovernmental revenues, you get state shared revenues every year. There was a supplemental addition in 2024 for all municipalities, and I believe that the village received about two hundred thousand dollars. Does that sound about right, Karen?
I believe so.
Of supplemental aid?
Yes.
I'm not sure moving forward. Do you know if that's something that's going to be continued to be funded, or is that a one and done deal?
I thought it was continuous.
Oh, good. Good. And then the other thing is under federal grants, that number was up quite a bit too, because you did utilize about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of ARBA funding. And then we also booked seventy-nine thousand dollars of federal funding for that Center Bridge project. Since you guys did have expenditures of ninety-nine thousand, and the grant is written in that favorable paper eighty percent, that we wanted to make sure we just booked that revenue of seventy-nine thousand in 2024, since that actually comes from the expenses that were incurred in 2024. So, right now, that's booked as a receivable on your books. Once that funding starts coming in, we'll just take that receivable off the books when that cash comes in. But we did want to make sure we booked that revenue in accordance with the expenses that you guys saw in 2024. And the other thing that we did see quite an increase in your building permits. We discussed that too earlier this week, just kind of the number of permits and the size of those permits seemed to have gone up in 2024. And then if you go on to page forty, you did have about eighty-two thousand dollars of equipment sales, a number of trucks, some mowers. I think there's about six or seven or eight pieces of equipment that you guys sold. So, that was added revenue in 2024 that we didn't see to that extent in 2023. And then if you look on page forty-one, another major difference from prior year is the capital outlay piece. In 2023, you guys utilized some of your project improvement funds. It was almost a million dollars for some construction projects. You did not do that in 2024. So, the capital outlay actually was down about over nine hundred thousand dollars in 2024 versus 2023. But again, you didn't utilize any of those project improvement funds, so they still are there for the future. And then pages forty-two through forty-nine, again, are just notes that reflect that Wisconsin retirement system, the pension system that you guys are part of. These are just notes that we get directly from WRS that are just a part of the requirement that we put those in your financial report. And then on page fifty and fifty-one, we have a balance sheet and a revenue and expenditure for the impact fee in the stormwater. There were no significant changes in either one of those funds, but there is just kind of some basic information of what those revenues and expenditures look like. The impact fee fund made about seven thousand three hundred, and the stormwater had a surplus of just under sixty thousand. So, that is a summary of that financial report. A couple of things that, you know, we would note it during audits, and I know, Karen, we've talked too about some of those outstanding checks that were greater than a year old, and I think you might have even cleared those up already in 2025.
Yes, I have.
There was some inconsistencies with accounts payable. Again, I, we've already spoke about that. And it was mainly just trying to get everything into year end that was applicable to 2024. It looked like some of the things kind of got posted in there twice. So, we talked about that. And then the other thing was, when you're budgeting for debt service, there is like a bond fee that you're paying to the bank every year of nine hundred and fifty dollars, just to make sure you get that in the budget, so that debt service fund doesn't get overused. If you want to make sure that money gets in there to cover those expenses. But that was everything from the report and from the audit. Everything went well. It was great work on Karen and her team. Appreciate all the help that they gave us. Do you guys have any questions?
I don't. You guys have any?
No.
No questions?
Karen, do that?
You have anything else?
No, we covered all of my questions.
Make a motion?
Yeah. Is there a motion to accept the audit report as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion. Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
So, Karen, you did the motion, then you're going to get the report to Bill so he can finalize it for us?
Yes. We're hoping, he is going out of town. I'm not sure if he's going to be in in the morning. I'm hoping he can get the final report in the morning, and then I can get you a final PDF of that. And also, I will file an amended Form C then and get that completed. I will do that tomorrow for sure.
Okay.
But hopefully, you'll see the final, the final report come through tomorrow often.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Karen. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good evening, Karen.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Do you have to give the audit report to anybody, the bank or anybody?
The bank, bank and bonding service, the federal government, because of that, because of the grant? Just to make sure, just so they have a good idea of where we are financially. Is anybody have questions for Tom? I think we're good.
Wonderful. I'm on here.
What are we expecting, budget from TPW, fire chief?
They're already working on it.
Okay.
So, they'll be putting their budgets together in August. And then, and then the board would be, you know, to give you a draft budget for you to look at, and we'll have meetings on, on that. What's that, Dylan?
I was going to say, how many years we'd appreciate roads for, but it was separate.
Great.
All right. Moving on to bartender slash operator.
Thank you, Tom. Everybody say thank you to Tom.
Thanks, Tom. I have licenses for Dan Millies, Jill Stolman-Majewski, Cole Strobel, and John Freeman. I will abstain from any discussion and voting on these since I'm associated with all of them. So, if you guys have any questions for them or concerns, feel free to pick over.
I would use both without sending issues.
If they made it this far, it's probably okay, right?
I don't think there's a problem.
And they're all renewals. Just so, just so the board members know, these are all renewed. Never had any problems. They have good bartenders and, so if you wouldn't mind just making the motions individually, that would be helpful.
Individually?
Right.
I guess I'll make the motion to approve Dan Millies for the bartender operator license.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I'll abstain. Motion for Jill Stolman-Majewski.
I'm sorry, Jill.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I'll abstain. Cole Strobel?
I'll make that motion.
Talk to everybody. Jim?
Jim.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I'll abstain. Passes unanimously except for mine. And John Freeman, the motion accepted. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I'll abstain. Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. So, have your license ready tomorrow. So, if you want to pick them up, they'll be all ready for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Moving on to appointments in the Village of Burn Sex Offender Registry Board. We have three positions open and three new people willing to serve. Jackie Trimborn from a term ending in April of fifteenth of 2028, Sue Ledki for a term of ending four fifteen two thousand twenty-seven, and Tina Doggett for a term ending on four fifteen two thousand twenty-six. Is there a motion to approve these individuals to serve on the Sex Offender Regency Board?
Whatever the board pleases, whatever.
We can do them all.
Just do all in one. I'll make motions for all three of them to leave appointment for the board, Sex Offender Regency Board.
As indicated on, it, terms ending as indicated on the agenda, Dylan?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by choice. Do you hear? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash oh-three, an ordinance to rezone the property located at South Ninety West Two Seven Four Five Five National Avenue from R one residential one acre to residential one acre district and ECO environmental corridor overlay and conservancy overlay district to B three business and ECO environmental corridor overlay and CO conservancy overlay districts.
Well, I just want to, excuse me, Mr. President. Just want to tell the board, I did send this to the attorney because it's an ordinance. So, if you do approve that ordinance, it would be contingent on legal review if the board wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Yeah. Ordinance is always go the.
Right. I just found out that all of our zoning ordinance have not gone to the county. So, once legal review is done, there's a whole bunch that have to go up to the county, and then they're going to change our zoning maps.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of property from R one residential to B three business. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Approval of plan commission's recommendation to approve the site plan and plan of operation for Wilford Smith's indoor golf facility and restaurant located at South Ninety West Two Ports, West Two Seven Four Five Five National Avenue. This was covered in last week's plan commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan, plan of operation for Wilford Smith's indoor golf facility restaurant.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by trustee Hertz. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Authorized village president to sign contract modification justification for Center Bridge project. The amount for that.
It was twelve thousand.
Yeah.
And you're going to see that, that is under the oversight of the state of Wisconsin. And the engineers, that packet, that thirty-five page packet, explains to the board what the issue was. And everyone has signed off on that modification except the village president, which he cannot until you give him that. except the village president, which he cannot until you give him that authority to do so.
Okay. You don't have much choice on this one, really?
Nope. Nope. And in the, and the grant, when, when I wrote the grant, there are contingencies because you, you don't know what's going to happen. And obviously, by the report, when they, when they start digging, they ran into, I, it was fascinating to see what they, the rebar and that chunk of concrete that was in the nineteen, nineteen thirties, that piece of concrete. I thought that was amazing that they even, but that, that's, that's what they hit.
They need to clean up after themselves.
Not in nineteen thirty. But I'd love to know who, because there are some farmers that remember, I mean, remember how they built that then, but I mean, having that rebar and, I don't know what they made it out of, but it was awful strong from what the, but they're out of the river now. That's a good thing, you know?
That's good stuff back then.
Need a motion?
Yes, to authorize the village president to sign the contract modification justification for Center Bridge Project.
I'll make a motion if you just said it, okay?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's made. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Authorized Village President to sign fiscal addendum for copiers for Village Hall and Fire Station number one.
And board members, whenever, I, I know you're seeing the accounts payable. We were paying fifteen thirty-eight for our previous copiers every, every accounts payable every month. You have that, and the new total is like six hundred thirty-seven dollars, but that, that is financed. They're always financed because the board didn't choose to buy those copiers. So all you would be doing is authorizing President Millies to sign that contract to, yes.
Did you do that?
No, you signed, this was, she added this, she didn't have it ready when you did the, you approved the contract, but you did not approve the addendum for the financing, and this is what that is now. That's the last piece. And, you know, under the law, Jeff can't sign unless you give him permission to do so. It would be permission to sign the fiscal addendum for the copiers for both the Village Hall and the Fire Station.
I'll make a motion to authorize the village president to sign the fiscal, fiscal addendum for copiers for Village Hall and Fire Station number one.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Village Board comments on the draft Wisconsin Emergency Management Plan.
Board members, just so you know, the gentleman that's taking over emergency government at the county is creating an emergency plan with administrators and DPW directors, and both Brett and I will be serving. And I wanted you to see what they've come up with so far. There's no action required, but they're asking for board members to take a look at that. And as, as, as information comes in, I'll always get it to you. Then if you could get your comments to me, okay, to the county. But this gentleman that's running the emergency government coordination for Waukesha County is absolutely phenomenal. Really top-notch guy. It's a, it's an additional. All, all, all communities have an emergency management authority. Ours is our fire, normally it is the fire chief. But then what they're creating too is like an add-on or, so that, God forbid, if there is an emergency, there's additional help, so it's not all on the fire chief. You work with the fire chief, so they're, they're trying to make an extremely comprehensive program throughout the county. And then what's happening throughout the state is county directors are working with other county directors, so Wisconsin is trying to be as proactive as they can, depending whatever emergency would ever come to the state. So that's what you're seeing now, is just proactive planning at the local level, to the county level, counties to the state. So, right, no action, but like I said, all that information, I'd like to get it to the board members. That way, if you have any comments, I'd like to get it to that, to the director also. That's it.
All right, Vernon, two thousand twenty-five Fall Newsletter.
Well, Mr. President, I just wanted to ask the board, if I get this done like next week, would the board mind calling a special meeting, like at the end of July, just for the newsletter? Only, the only reason I ask is it usually takes them, the printer, at least almost two weeks for them to print it. Then it's got to go to where they put the addresses on, and it's got to go to the post office. It takes about four weeks to get a newsletter out, and I wanted to get it well in advance of the rush pickup and any, any other information. And then you'll have one more newsletter for taxes and, you know, all the end-of-year stuff, but I just wondered if the board wouldn't mind, you know, calling a special meeting just to approve the newsletter.
Do I do it then?
It doesn't matter to me.
It should be quick, yeah, given the volume.
Right. And what I'd do is I'd put that, you know, in your packet, the public's packet.
And I would, if I might, try a little bit at the end of the month.
Right. And if I get it done soon, I'll let you know. But I'd like to give you guys an opportunity to read it, you know, maybe enough time to go through it.
I'll find it.
Yeah, so there's no action required. Like I said, it's been crazy trying to get everything finalized for, you know, for the audit and stuff, but I just wanted to see if board members wouldn't mind doing a quick, just, just the newsletter, unless, God forbid, something happens with the bridge. But we do have, just so you know, weekly meetings on the bridge every week. And Jim, you've got to go in on those. That'll give you something to do. That's it, Mr. President.
All right, moving on to correspondence and announcements. Couple of things I'd like to say. Ever since we talked about having ATVs, UTVs allowed in the road, I've been getting a few phone calls where people are completely against it, which is surprising to me, mainly due to noise and their fear of reckless driving, treating the road like a racetrack, about their, their concerns. Also, supposedly, one sixty-four south of Big Ben's going to be opening soon. We'll wait and see if that really happens, but that should be open within a week here.
Tomorrow.
We'll see. Also, Waukesha County Fair started, so get out and enjoy summer. It's half over. That's all I have. Jay?
Well, our neighboring village of Waukesha had two house fires that I've experienced within two and a half weeks of each other, so I really ask that people can really inventory their house and eliminate any fire hazards. I certainly don't like seeing anybody's house have a fire in the village here. What's going on?
Trustee Finch?
I don't have any of this.
Trustee Newland?
No.
Trustee Hurd? Moving on to June two thousand twenty-five Treasuries Report. This is in the packet.
There's no formal action. I just wanted to.
Okay.
Show the board what Terry did. I like the fact that they're done timely.
ACH transactions, is that?
That's coming up.
That's coming up, okay. Stus' Bank Quarterly Plut Security Report, ending six thirty two thousand twenty-five. That was in the packet.
And that's always put in there, just so the auditor can see that you're seeing the amount of money that, especially during tax time, that we hold in securities. They want, they want to make sure you're seeing all those millions and millions of dollars. Not that they're all sitting in Citizens Bank. They're in secured accounts, so if, God forbid, anything would happen.
Okay.
Taxpayers' money is secure.
We got the Vernon Fire Department Report and EMS Emergency Service Reports in the packet. Administrator clerk report?
My reports were in the packet. I just wanted to tell the board that, we're putting on the website and Facebook, the Register of Needs just came up with an option for residents to sign up for, if there's any, any requests from any outside agency for your tax key number. It's a way to have an alert, free, Waukesha County's doing this for free, to, if anybody's inquiring about your title. So it's a free program. We're going to put everything up on the website and Facebook. So that's, that's all I have in addition to. That's it.
All right, moving to accounts payable for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I had a question about Rock River Auto Body. There was two bills for about five thousand a piece for an ambulance. Was that an insurance claim or was that, is that something that the village is paying out? What happened? You know, we've been getting some emails about accidents that have happened, so I'm just wondering if this is related.
What's the, the date, date on the bill?
Seven seventeen twenty-five.
That's the date?
The, the data, quarter date is four seventeen twenty-five, or four twenty-one twenty-five? Is that what? Seven seventeen is the date that this report was.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any accidents.
So this is from, I mean, this looks like, so it's, it's a rubber rail, so it's two separate builds, and it's a left front rubber rail, left rear rubber rail, left wheel flare paint match, and that was almost five hundred grand. And then the same day, there was a left front headlight, air trumpet, alignment, paint match. So that, that's telling me there was some kind of accident. And I'm just wondering if this was, you know, did we hit somebody or did somebody hit us? Are we, is this like an insurance?
Well, I mean, you're going to have to pay the bill, but you could have the chief answer. If you didn't call him and ask him, then.
He's got certified, then I want him to speak on.
Oh, I can tell you.
What that was for, yeah.
There's no claims. If any claim that goes to the insurance company.
That's what I was, yeah.
I, I can tell you there hasn't been any claims recently. I know they, something, something with a head gasket just blew, but we haven't gotten that bill yet.
Head gasket. So the head gasket, yeah, that was twelve something.
Twelve thousand, yeah.
This was a, this was an accident of some sort that happened.
Does it say, it says accident on the bill?
I'm sure it was. I mean, that looks like an accident, all those, all those things. So I was just wondering, you know, what, if, if we hit somebody, is the village board, are they, should they be notified when, when the fire department hits or gets hit or there's some kind of big damage like that? Whether it's the fire department or the DPW, you know, what, any kind of?
All I can tell you is when I file a claim, the board's copied on it.
Right. Okay. So this must have been something to do with, okay. I'll ask them.
There hasn't been, I can tell you, there hasn't been any recent claims that I filed.
I think there might have been one back in two thousand twenty-three or something, but.
Or is this, this is for, well, we have that on the date, for twenty-one twenty-five. Or it's, it would have worked if there was one.
Yes, you're talking about the one last year.
Yeah. Is that an accident, an accident?
Yeah, there was an accident.
Yeah, it was over a year ago.
It wasn't the fire departments, Paul. It was somebody hit the ambulance. You know, it wasn't our fault.
So we got that email about an individual, something with an individual. I'll ask you about it another time, but I'll send it to you. It was about, we just got it. A woman. It was not her fault, from what I was reading.
Not on the agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd call the chief.
Do we put it on the agenda next meeting if you want to discuss it?
Yeah.
Any other questions on Tom's payroll? Is there a motion to approve, what was the?
Eighty-five thousand six oh nine nineteen?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of eighty-five thousand, but six hundred and nine dollars and nineteen cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I have one question. Our cameras are not fully functioning now, right? Is there any noise for that?
The five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yes. There's a little bit of a delay when we got to switch from, because the OBS is, is older than ten years, so we have to download an OBS, which will be, right.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion? Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Manual checks, there are none?
There are none, sir.
Manual checks. June two thousand twenty-five ACH transactions. They were in the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents.
And that does require a motion from the board?
Any questions on ACH?
Does that make sense to you? Do you follow it?
Most of it was payroll, or a big chunk of it.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to village board minutes. Oh, no, we got the two thousand twenty-five monthly financial statement.
But there's no motion on that.
Yeah, that was in the packet. Minutes, July first, we had one correction that was taken care of.
Jim being in it.
Sorry, Jim.
The invisible man.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the village board minutes from July first, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion? Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Minutes from July ninth.
Quick meeting. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Motion made by Trustee Newland, seconded by Trustee Hurd. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Go ahead.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Meeting is.